Hello, everybody, and welcome to the January 11, 2021 Borough Council meeting for the Metuchen Borough Council. The quick notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 7, 2021, posted in Borough Hall and on file in the Clerk's office. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Before we begin the meeting and before the flag salute, if you'd just join me in a moment of silence for Capitol Police Officer and former Middlesex County South River resident, Brian Sicknick.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic, one nation, under God, in the physicality.
Roll call, please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Here.
Councilman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilman Candell?
Here.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Here.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Here.
Council President Kuskowski?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here.
All right. I'm going to, let's just see, we're gonna start the agenda session, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open the agenda session?
I move to open the...
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda session is open. Anything for the agenda? All right.
No.
Seeing none? Have a motion to close the agenda session?
I move to close the agenda session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this time, we're gonna go right to the pub. If you'd like to make a comment through Zoom, please, obviously, come on the Zoom meeting. Our password is, our meeting ID is 851-888-87351. Our password is 490955. And obviously, if you're on the Zoom already, if you could just raise your hand, and obviously, we'll see that your hand is raised using the hand raise icon. I see a couple people who are on here, but I will call on you if your hand is raised only.
Mayor?
Yes.
There are no messages at this, or no text emails.
Okay, we have a special guest with us. I'm gonna lower his hand. It's like he never left. Come in. Former Councilman Todd Pagel.
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year.
Good to, good to see everybody.
I've just called in to say a huge congratulations to the Metuchen downtown. It's up on New Street. I know, I'm sure Councilman Delia is gonna talk about it a little bit later, but I just think that's a huge benefit for our downtown, and it's gonna really help. One concern that I did have, and I know it was voiced by a couple of volunteers who were there, was the fact that they were put on the sidewalk, and I just... You know, place to put them. We all know that sidewalk space in the borough is very limited. I know that area is pretty wide, and it's really just between the trees and the curb, but you know, if it was to be, if this is to be a permanent, you know, solution or a long-term solution to move them off of the sidewalk and put them in the road, there's plenty of space between the, between the tents, the curb, and the, and the yellow line. But besides that, they look amazing. Really excited to have some meals in there when the time comes. That's all I have. I still have yet to congratulate Tyler. Tyler, wait for an email from me. Thanks so much for stepping up. Really happy to see you on there. Enjoy your time. Hope to talk to you soon. Thanks, there, that's all I got.
Thank you, Todd. Thanks, Todd. I understand, you know, Todd, we obviously don't want to have any part of the tent on the sidewalk. That was not the desire. I was not involved in every element of it. I just knew that there was an issue with fitting the tents in the street as a result of some of the sizing. You know, I think some of these issues with respect to the supplying of tents became quite an issue. I don't know, Melissa, you wanna speak to that?
Yes. So the reason, there was never any plan to put them into the sidewalk initially, but once the tents came and they, they saw the layout, we were all out there. I had Fred Hall and the Chief of Police. We needed it, there was a line at which you could not go over that yellow line, and that was, with that determination, but we... It's that as the, you know, we had to for safety reasons, especially for traffic safety, and whatever, however the tents were measured prior, I don't know, it's what we had, so to make it work, we put them into the sidewalk. So they're, just so everyone knows, you know, they're not, once COVID is over, they will not remain in the street. We'll move to something else, but this is purely for a COVID situation. I mean, everything evolves over time, but these were not meant to be permanent structures that would forever stay on New Street. It was for this interim period to get the businesses through this, these colder months. They were flame-retarded tents, windproof tents. I know way too much about tents than I did a year ago, and they met the guidelines from the state regarding snow loads and wind loads, and they were able to put some heating, heating elements in that could also... And extend the dining season, because right now, you know, sitting outside with just the propane tank and not having the covering is a little, I don't, I don't think it appeals to many people. So that was the reason for it. Being practical, making sure that we could facilitate after the tents had been purchased.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pearlstein.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Ms. Rubin?
Is it possible to direct people who will be needing the sidewalk to the other side of the street, just like, I know we have a lot of signage... ...be unable to access New Street from the sidewalk, from an accessory?
Jerry, they can definitely access the sidewalk. There's no, it's right at the curb. It's not into the sidewalk... Right at the curb itself. That was a concern.
I think it's six inches, I think it's six inches into the curb.
It's six inches into the curb. It would not, it's not obstructing anyone's ability to use the sidewalk.
Okay, good.
Okay? No, that was a big concern. We wouldn't have allowed it had it gone beyond where the, where the trees are and into the actual sidewalk. Okay?
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Any other questions from the public, comments, I should say, from the public? All right. Seeing none, and anything, Ms. Jackson, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, great. We're gonna move on with ordinance introduction?
Yep. Ordinance 2021-01, that's what we're gonna be introducing.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna make a motion there.
Yes. I move to, I move that ordinance 2021-01 be introduced and taken up on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ms. Jackson, will you please read the ordinance by title only? And I'm sorry. An ordinance amending...
The doozy.
Yeah. Section 110-4, definitions in Article 1, titled Purpose: Definitions in Part 1 of General Provisions in Chapter 110, Land Development, Section 110-7, Exceptions from Site Plan Review in Article 2, Zoning Permits, in Part 2, Applications for Development in Chapter 110 of Land Development, Amending Section 1... In Article 12, Minor Site Plan Applications in Part 2, Applications for Development in Chapter 110, Land Development, Amending Section 64, Density, Coverage, and Bulk Controls in Article 16, Zoning Districts, Zoning Map, Zoning Schedule in Part 3, Zoning, in Chapter 110 of Land Development, Amending Section 110-110, Permitted Projections in Article 23, Supplementary Regulations in Part 3, Zoning, in Chapter 110, Land Development, Amending Section 110-112.6, 23, Supplementary Regulations in Part 3, Zoning, in Chapter 110, Land Development, of the Code of the Borough of Metuchen, to revise requirements relating to structures used for outdoor dining areas in the B1 Central Business District and D1 Downtown Development District. Okay.
Good job, Susan.
We wonder why people think government is bananas, right?
Hey, Dennis, do I have to read all those parentheses?
What, you're on mute?
You're on mute.
It is the title.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
I'm glad you're getting a kick out of this, Council. All right, good. All right.
Can we get a short explanation of what that is?
Yeah, and this has to do with the tents, but I'll let Ms. Pearlstein... I just, that was.
Okay, so basically, what this is doing is it's just clarifying, clarifying whether the structure qualifies for a site plan exemption. I'm sure you can all appreciate, aside from the tents, there are restaurants, restaurants specifically in the downtown that are looking to put different areas to expand their outdoor dining. They might, they didn't necessarily qualify for the tents and what happened on New Street, but are looking to maximize their outdoor dining and make it, make it more permanent in nature in terms of having... What we did was, we looked at some of the things, and basically, it's just seeing whether we're increasing, we're allowing so that they don't have to do a whole site plan to go to the plan board, to help, because that's money, it's time, it's professionals, so it's trying to be flexible. You know, we had a couple different calls about this. J. Muldoon was the one who brought it to everyone's attention via one of the restaurants that reached out to him on this, and we're just trying to work with the businesses to, you know, the idea here is to make sure that they can stay, stay afloat and vibrant, so we're trying to do whatever we can in terms of this, and this is one of the things... Chris Cessenza was very intimately involved with this, along with Bob Renad. It's gotta go to the planning board for their review, but basically, it was just to say, you know what, let's, let's, let's make things a little bit more... And all of that stuff, so that's basically what it is.
All right.
Ordinance 2021, be passed on first reading and published according to law, and a public hearing set down for February 8, 2021, and that was ordinance...
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Candell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
You're on mute.
Council President Kuskowski?
Yes. Okay. At this time, I move that ordinance 2021-02 be introduced and taken up on first reading.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ms. Jackson, will you please read the ordinance by title only? An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Metuchen and the composition of the Human Relations Commission, increasing its membership from 15 members to 19 members. That's pretty self-explanatory, right?
Is, yeah.
At this time, I move that ordinance 2021-02 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing set down for Monday, February 8, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Candell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kuskowski?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now I'd like to move ordinance 2021-03 be introduced and taken up on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are any opposed?
Ms. Jackson, will you please read the ordinance by title only? An ordinance amending the code of the, repealing and replacing Article 42 entitled Surface Water Runoff in its entirety to adopt new regulations consistent with amendments to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Management Rules. Can we get a short explanation of that one?
Sure thing. Okay, so this is just to get us in compliance. There've been a lot of new stormwater regulations initiated by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This is one item that was prepared by our borough engineer, Tom Haritz, to be in compliance with the new stormwater regs that are being initiated by the New Jersey...
And Mayor, if I, if I may, the DEP has required all the municipalities to pass the regulations by March, otherwise, they'd be subject to, I mean, possible fines or penalties for non-compliance.
Got it, okay.
And they issued essentially a model, a model of the proposed ordinance that was required, which was forwarded to Tom Haritz to narrow it to the Borough of Metuchen.
Can I make a small comment, Mayor?
Yeah, of course.
Just two really quick things. First of all, this is great. I love all the green infrastructure stuff that's being added into here, and I'm really happy to see that. The, the, the mayor changed, the county board, they are now, they've changed their title as of, you know, beginning of this year, to be now the commissioners as opposed to freeholders, and I did notice in our definitions for County Review Agency, we are... Freeholders, and perhaps that might be something we could just quickly change before the second reading, if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's by state statute. Dennis, you don't have a problem with that, that won't hold things up.
No, that's, that, that, I mean, just giving it the correct title would not require, I mean, a, a, a second public hearing.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilman. All right, so now you gotta move, right?
Yep. I move that ordinance 2021-03 be passed on first reading, published according to law, for Monday, February 8, 2021.
Thanks, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Candell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kuskowski?
Yes. At this time, I move to approve Communications Consent Agenda, items A through B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Reports of council members. Council President Kuskowski?
So, the library reorganization meeting will be taking place tomorrow night, and the Parking Authority will be meeting next Tuesday, and so I'll have more to report at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention a big event that's starting on behalf of the Arts Council. The event is called the Windows of Understanding, and it's kicking off on the 18th of January, which is Martin Luther King Day. This is a Arts Council and the Human Relations Commission that joins artists around the topics this year of climate change, food insecurity, healing from trauma, public health, and youth engagement. In addition to there being art in public places, which will begin at the Metuchen Public Library on the 18th, there will also be community conversations with service organizations that handle those issues that I just recently mentioned. The first conversation will be on January 27 at 7:30, about food insecurity, and this can be accessed through the Facebook page for the Human Relations Commission. And throughout the next couple of months, each one of those topics will be addressed, and there will be a conversation with speakers that represent those service organizations. So keep a lookout for the art in public places, and please join us for those conversations. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Sure, I have a brief report. The Environmental Commission, it's Wednesday, January 20th, that's their reorganization meeting at 7 o'clock, and there will be a link for the Zoom for anyone who wants to, you know, sit in on the meeting on Zoom. And the Shetree Commission is going to be having their reorganization meeting in February. We have to set the date. So that'll also be a Zoom meeting, and that'll be posted, and the Senior Citizen Commission is still not meeting yet due to the COVID-19, and that's my...
Councilman Hirsch?
Ms. Councilman Candell?
See, I'm trying to go in the right order here, actually. I think, it's actually, yeah, should it be Candell?
Yeah.
What's the order here? Are we alphabetical?
Reverse alphabetical.
Reverse, reverse. The women actually get to go first and then the men, but it's alphabetical backwards.
You were just... Teasing the new guy with reverse alphabetical orders, got it. We are honored to have you for your first Councilman report. Is there anything you'd like to report to us?
I really have only a brief report since I really have not gotten...
Reports around here.
Yeah, yeah. So the Historic Preservation Committee is meeting on January 28, and so I'll have a report on that after the next meeting, I think.
Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Really happy to have you, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. The next Metuchen Pool Commission meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, January 13 at 8:00 p.m., and the next... ...day, January 14 at 7:30 p.m., and that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Delia?
Thank you, Mayor. The Charter Transportation Committee is having its first meeting in... On in the month, so I'll have some more reports coming up soon. I'll talk about tents today, but I'll just mention, thank you for everyone that came out to help set those up with the Metuchen Downtown Alliance, including two of our councilmen here, Councilman Candell and Councilman Hirsch.
And yourself.
There had to be 30 people there, right, at least, and we needed every one of those hands, so it was really helpful to get those... At least it felt like it in that way. So thanks again for everyone that put that together, and one last thing, you may have seen in front of Borough Hall the last week or so, there was a memorial bike out in front of Borough Hall, which was placed there by our friends at Vision Zero for New Jersey. That was to commemorate Oscar Zanoni, who passed away about a year ago on January 3. We also lit up the Borough Hall in its favorite color of red, so thank you very much, Ms. Pearlstein and Mayor Bush, for helping to coordinate that. If anyone is interested in, in what they could do further to help, you know, it's actually one of the, there's some spoken word poetry that Oscar wrote, and one of the things he said in one of his poems was, "Help the next guy." So if you're looking to help the next guy, visit Vision, Vision Zero for... Or find out how you can help try to make some change for the better for the safety of cyclists and pedestrians in New Jersey. That's our report. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilman, for your dedication to that effort. That was touching tribute to all of our friend Oscar, and obviously, it's been a year, hard to believe. Some ways, it was like yesterday, in other ways, it feels like 10 years ago, just with everything that's happened since then, but it was a great way to honor him and his memory and... Itself, so thank you for that. Ms. Pearlstein? I know we have a guest with us today, right?
Yes, we do. I know that Councilwoman Rasmussen had called me about this regarding the, or maybe it was, I'm sorry, maybe it was Councilman Delia about the resolution extending... Bridge, a gas pipeline that's gonna be, they're gonna be working on in the upcoming weeks. Dennis Cullen is here. If anyone has any questions, the resolution is just extending the time for an...
And their idea would be, and obviously, we can bring Dennis in, and I've obviously spoken to Dennis before, and I appreciate that Dennis is with us today. He's been a lot of help on this project, but one of the biggest concerns, obviously, is getting this project done as quickly as possible. I mean, it's a utility, they have every right to do the work, but I appreciate that they've been working as hard as they have with us to try to engage us in some concerns that, that we've had, and one of them is getting this project done as quickly as possible. So maybe Mr. Cullen can describe a little bit about what we can expect and answer questions if any other council members have.
So, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Basically, what this project is, is it's a construction project. We will be building a pipeline connecting from our main line, which runs parallel to the Amtrak rail line, and it will be running a mile... Into the Transco pipeline by the PSENG facility, by the Middlesex Greenway. Ultimately, the gas will be used to, to bring a alternate source of, of energy to the Woodbridge Energy, Energy Center over in Woodbridge. We, we've been going through a FERC process. This is an interstate pipeline process, so we're regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. We started that process back in 2018. We received our approvals right, right around December, and now we're going through the construction phase. Construction mobilization is anticipated to begin in February. Ultimate final tie-ins and commissioning of the project... September of this year. So as we go through the, the construction, we were given... By FERC to work seven to seven each day. The township ordinance says seven to six during the weekdays, so we were asking to have that one additional hour. That additional hour each day actually does, does make sure that we can get this pipeline in service as soon as possible. That's point number one. As far as what is going on in Metuchen, we will be doing a horizontal directional drill from, by Metuchen Manor, under the Amtrak right-of-way, and heading toward Edison, and then running all the way down. So, so what you're gonna see in, in Metuchen is basically a drill rig over by Metuchen Manor... And private property, and then coming under the, the rail line, and ultimately, the pipeline at that, in that area will be upwards of 80 feet below surface, except for a certain portion that will be conventionally late. So it's, it's pretty much a horizontal directional drill.
So in layman's terms, Mr. Cullen, if you don't mind, how, how much, I mean, we're not talking about a huge amount of space in Metuchen, right? How many yards are we talking about in Metuchen itself?
I think we're talking about 1,500 yards in, in Metuchen, and the majority of it is, is, is under, like I said, is underground, basically in the tunnel.
And when you say private property, we're not talking about individual, family, private property, we're talking about like Amtrak, and describe to me the private property you're describing.
So we also, Nancy Kissed, who's right-of-way manager for us on the phone, but yes, the, it is private property, Metuchen Manor is the only... Metatchen Manor is the only, you know, private landowner who we're dealing with. Everybody else is Amtrak and PSCNG.
And you're working with them directly, correct, in Metatchen Manor?
We are.
Yes.
Hi, Nancy.
Mayor, good to see you. And the Council.
So, I just want to, I have another question, if I can, while you guys are here. And it's great. I didn't realize you'd have two of you here. It's helpful. You know, this area obviously has, when you hear gas line, there are some memories going back to years ago when there was an issue with the gas line. And thankfully, it wasn't even worse than it was. But the question really is, tell us about the safety level of this and how things have been improved since then. Because that was a big concern when we first started talking, and you were helpful in quelling my concerns in that regard.
Sure. Dennis, you want me to jump in, or you want to take the lead?
Yeah, sure. So, the incident that occurred in 1994 was horrendous. There was, it really led to changes at the national and federal level. As a result of that, you had the New Jersey Damage Prevention Control Program, which is, you know, Dial 811, which monitors all third-party excavations. The, an additional thing is, is that we have 24/7 monitoring of our pipeline system from Houston Control System down at our headquarters. We have patrolling of the pipeline weekly via aerial patrol and people on the ground. We will have a remote-controlled shut-off valve where it connects into our main line, both at the, by the railroad track, and then also on the southern end down in Edison. In addition, we have inline inspections, pressure testing, and you know, I mean, the amount of safety improvements that have been made over the past 25 years are significant. Safety is a core principle of our company. And, you know, another, you know, another thing is, is that by doing the horizontal directional drill, we'll be up to 80 feet below ground. And then we've also agreed, this small section of Metatchen Manor, where we're just cutting in place, the normal standard is three feet, but we're going to place ours four feet deep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I, obviously, what are residents going to expect? What's the average resident going to expect? I know it doesn't have a huge amount of disruption to our residential population. But is there noise? Is there?
They'll see construction equipment, obviously, coming and going up at the Metatchen Manor site. And, you know, there will be noise during the day related to those construction activities. But as part of our FERC certificate, we are required to have a noise mitigation plan to keep the noise from the project at a certain level. And I believe that's no greater than three decibels over the existing ambient noise. So, we'll place noise monitors at the site to make sure that we are meeting that requirement. We will also put up noise curtains, you know. You know, we'll figure out the right method of containing the noise to the construction zone so that it doesn't drift out and become a bother to the residents nearby. The Lands and Right-of-Way Group, we maintain a hotline phone number, a toll-free number. And if residents have any complaints, they contact my folks. And we're in the process of setting up a construction office on Pearson Avenue. I will have a construction, my team will be out there with the construction people at the same time that they're out there. In the event that a landowner has a question, they'll interface with the folks that work for me. And we prefer that they call the 800 number because, from my perspective, that means I have a tracking system for the complaint. There are folks that are trained to take those calls, and we commit to addressing that concern, you know, within 24 to 48 hours. And by that, I mean, we're going to call you back immediately. You may have a question or concern that might take me a little while to resolve, but we're going to get back to you with a resolution as quickly as possible. You know, we're very serious about being good neighbors, and we can be disruptive. And my group endeavors to make it as least disruptive as we possibly can for the amount of time that we're there. And then to leave good conditions behind when we're gone.
Actually, I appreciate that. You know, I think the borough in the last two years, and I always speak for some of the council members who've been here, and obviously, anyone watching at home know that this, we've had our issues, I just mean disruptions, right? Traffic jams, closed roads, bumpy roads, right? Durham Avenue, I know the people of Durham Avenue are thrilled that the street was finally paved within the last six months or so. And so, we've obviously been through the wringer. The one thing that, as Mayor, I've realized is that it is, and not everybody's done this. Middlesex Water, for example, did it. And they've gotten the handle on it after a while because we worked with them. Dennis and his staff and Nancy. What I appreciate is that they've come to this with that customer service approach, which means that, because, you know, when we have residents complain to us about utility issues, we end up picking up the phone and calling people like Nancy and Dennis. We say, "We've got issue. We've got this sort of customer service approach to this. We're going to have an ability for residents to go directly to them." And it's, listen, this is not a huge part of Metatchen. It's not like Durham Avenue was, where the entire, you know, that entire part of the borough was crippled by that traffic jam. But, you know, there's going to be some disruption because anytime you have construction, there's disruption. It's nice to see that they're stepping up and giving us that approach. So, we appreciate it. We appreciate that you were here. And obviously, if there's other issues, let us know, residents, council members. But your point person on this, obviously, is going to be, you know, Dennis for them. And now, I guess Nancy, but Melissa will by the time we get to February, let's roll together and let's get this project in.
Mayor, one last point, if I could just make, which is, we will contact all of the landowners that directly face the construction prior to beginning construction. They'll they know to reach us directly. And obviously, if we haven't already, we'll provide that 800 number to Melissa. That way, she can distribute it as she sees fit as well.
All right, that's great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any other questions from council members? No?
Not many questions, but they're all answered, so thank you.
Okay, Councilman. Thank you very much. Ms. Pearlstein, anything else?
No, not at this time.
Great. Just want to get a quick coronavirus update. It's not good. So, I know you all have seen some of my updates. So, those of you who follow me on social media, I'm trying to get the message out, obviously, about our concerns. But I'm going to give you some sort of startling statistics. We've had in the last seven days, we've had 79 cases just in the borough. Today, we had 10. Yesterday, we had eight. Six of the last 11 days in January so far, six out of the 11 have been in double digits. As many as 17, as few as we had one on January 4th. But who knows why that was the case? We've seen a huge uptick since the holidays and just in the holiday season in general. Just to put this in perspective, on November 30th, we had 597. We've surpassed Highland Park, which is a similar size to us. And we are, you know, Highland Park had many more cases than us in the spring. And we've passed them. We had the best transmission rate going through the spring and summer, and we have fallen flat on our faces. And I don't quite know exactly why, other than to say I'm going to say that again. It is not spreading in our schools. I know there's been people who supportive reasons for everything, from the fact that the schools are still open to the fact that dining is still open. But let's be clear. People have to be responsible. They have to wear a mask. They have to socially distance. I'm sort of sick of saying that, and people are probably sick of hearing me and other people in the community saying that and other leaders on TV saying that. So, I really don't know what other way it is to get through. This is something that is so contagious right now. Who knows if whatever variants they're talking about have arrived here in the borough? You know, the state testing that we have is not sophisticated enough to measure that. But we're in a really, really tough place with this. And, you know, it can get worse. It can. You know, we've got, we're at the point now where, if you do the numbers, I mean, the borough, according to the last census, and I know Ms. Kuskowski knows that we'll be getting our results on that at some point. But the last census, we had 14,300 people that live in the borough. So, imagine the fact that we have 597 people who've been infected. And any of you who know how to do math can figure out just how many people have had this virus, right? It's, and then we have this whole discussion where we get on, you know, you especially see it on social media where people say, "Well, how bad did they have it?" And it's one of those questions, I really, you know, I understand if people don't understand it. But it's not really a reasonable question in view of the fact that five residents who died, who would not have died if it were not for COVID. So, I just, you know, it's so serious, and we need to do better. We just need to do better. And so, you know, it's hard, and we, you know, but we've got to do what we can and take more responsibility. The police have indicated that there have been indoor gatherings that violate the executive order in the borough, which was something I had tremendous pride in, wasn't really going on for a while. As compared to my other mayors that I talked to, we had a really good record. And people have just decided to say, "Whatever." But each time you allow one person in your house, it's a significant risk. If a person comes to your house, it's a significant risk, even with masks on. It's a significant risk once you bring them into your house. If you have 10 people in your house, counting the numbers right now, that means you have a one out of three chance of testing positive thereafter. One out of three chance when you have 10 people in your house. So, the numbers should be startling. And if they're not, maybe that's why, if they're not startling to you, maybe that's why it's spreading as much as it is. So, just please, if you're listening to this, and I don't think very many are listening to this, at least based on what I'm seeing right now, because this meeting doesn't have as much excitement as maybe others have, it's just please help me impress upon neighbors to do the right thing because it impacts all of us. Any questions on the COVID issues that we've seen? Let's bring this thing down. We can do that.
Mayor.
Example again, yeah.
Excuse me, I'd just like to, one thing I did remember is that we put a link. It's really important that at the state for the vaccine, the vaccine's being rolled out in a phased approach. The first phase is happening right now. That phase is all healthcare workers and people who live and work in long-term care facilities. They've just recently also included firemen, policemen, and EMS. Anyone who will be administering this vaccine to have you pre-registered in advance, it's just going to make the process a lot smoother. So, you can go onto our website, and it has COVID vaccine, and it brings you right to the link for New Jersey to pre-register.
In the next couple of weeks, you're going to be seeing a significant uptick in the number of vaccines available. I know Ms. Rasmussen has already gotten, when is your second, when's your second shot, Ms. Rasmussen? You're on mute. You're on mute. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so January 21st. And trust me, it was not a difficult flu vaccine, and it's so much worse. When you get the flu vaccine, you're instantly in pain, and you feel like your arm's going to fall off. This one was pretty good. I got it. I had no discomfort at all until the next day. And it was like I banged my arm, like you bang your arm in the corner of the wall or something. Very mild, so.
And they're saying, listen, they're saying that after the second shot, you may have some symptoms. You may have to take a day off from work. You may have to kind of hang out, watch some shows on TV or whatever, right? Surf social media, whatever. But try, try really hard, if you can, to follow, obviously, Councilwoman Rasmussen's example. I'm sorry to make an example out of you, but that'll be our next phase. We're really going to be pushing the vaccine. The borough is actually talking, you know, we're in conversations about the possibility of assisting with that. But there's going to be some time before that's able to happen just because we're not there. They're still in 1A, just healthcare workers. They're still, I think that, you know, the county had still only gotten 1,000 shots, which was only enough for 500 people, which is really nothing compared to how densely populated our county is. So, there's still a backlog in the number of vaccines we'll need. But we expect that to change, both here in the state and with the national approach coming up over the next couple of weeks. We're hoping that by the end of January, things really start pumping. And we're starting to move through phase after 1A. We can get our teachers, you know, obviously inoculated. I'll tell you right now, I advocated during a call last week, Sayerville and Metatchen are the only two public school districts in Middlesex County who have hybrid going right now. Also, the Middlesex County, so those three. But the mayor of Sayerville and I, Vicki Kilpatrick and I, advocated on the call to ensure that Metatchen's teachers and Sayerville's teachers are the first to be inoculated. If we're going to be the ones in school, we should be the first in the list to get those shots in Middlesex County. And they were open to that idea, obviously, as they should be under the circumstances. So, we'll be continuing to advocate for that so that our teachers get shot, if you will, first. All right? Okay. New business consent agenda? Council President?
Okay. Dash 244 through 22 I didn't, I'm sorry. It's 221-50 through 221-254, correct? No. 2021-50 through 2021-63. Linda, what do you have? Because my
Mine says 2020-244. Where are we right now? What number?
Sorry. I have
My says something different.
What does yours say, Tyler?
I have 50 to 63.
Tell why. Council President, what he said?
Yes, so it should be 2021 through 50 through 63, but that's not what my mind says.
Right. The mayor's agenda and the council president's
Yeah.
All right, is there a second?
I see where you're reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Rasmussen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to ask for the appointment also of Rashir Mawalala to the Metatchen Shetree
Rashir Maywala.
Maywala, right?
Yeah, Maywala.
Maywala? Okay. A-W-A-L-A is what it said on here.
Yeah.
Maywala, okay. Great.
Your appointment. I moved to
Approval on that?
I moved to accept. No approval, it's just the mayor's appointment.
That's fine. And I hereby declare Rashir Mawala as my appointment to the Metatchen Shetree Commission. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in This is easy, right?
Yeah.
No big deal.
Snap.
Sorry, Linda.
Take care.
Good night, everybody.